All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Excuse me. And welcome to the special meeting of the Housing Redevelopment Authority for the City of Edina and the Edina City Council for Tuesday, June 27, 2017. The council meeting will follow the HRA meeting. The HRA meeting has a public hearing component to it as we contemplate entering into redevelopment agreement down on Market Street. Mr. Newendorf will have a presentation first, but first of all, having called the meeting to order, I'll ask Ms. Mangen to take care of roll call.
Thank you. Commissioner Brindle?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Staunton?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Chair Havon.
Here. Members, we have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone that wishes to modify the agenda in any form, otherwise entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as shown?
So move.
Got a motion to adopt the agenda as shown. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion to second discussion. All those in favor of following the approved meeting agenda or the suggested meeting agenda form, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Next matter in front of the HRA this evening is a public hearing on the proposed sale and redevelopment of the properties that the city owns at 3925, 3930, and 3944 Market Street. And the presentation is from our Economic Development Director, Mr. Newendorf. Welcome.
Thank you. Yes, the first agenda item tonight is regarding the proposed sale of land that's owned by the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and that's a sale that's contingent on a redevelopment agreement. For the last six months, the city staff has been working in partnership with our selected partners on this, Buell Investors and Saturday Properties. That team was selected out of a group of three that were interviewed last year, and the general objective of entering into these conversations has been to improve public parking down at 50th and France, a topic that we've talked about for many, many years, but to do so in a way that doesn't just add more parking, but in a way that adds life and vitality, new business opportunity, new residential opportunities, and improvements to the public realm, those public spaces that we all enjoy at 50th and France. So after six months, we think we have, we think we've done that. So what I'll do tonight is summarize the proposal that we have in front of you, and then we'll open it up for the public hearing and happy to answer any other questions that you might have. So the presentation tonight is very similar to what we laid out at our last HRA and city council meeting. There are a couple updates based on some suggestions and preferences that you indicated to us at that time. So the parcels that we have in mind are the, are the parcels on Market Street or what was formerly known as West 49th and a Half Street. The HRA has owned those properties, in some cases for over 40 years, in other cases just for three or four. But the proposal in front of you tonight, as I mentioned, isn't just a simple sale of real estate. It's really a partnership to achieve a common benefit, a big, a big improvement on that street. So it's a project by the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority along with a symbiotic project by the Market Street Group that work together. If the city and the HRA adjusted our piece and the developers did not do theirs, it would not be successful. And likewise, if the developer did their piece but the city did not do ours, theirs would not be a successful conclusion. So they've really been working together. And I mentioned that these are really two distinct projects, which is a slightly different approach than what we thought we'd do six months ago. But in order to make sure that we are compliant with Minnesota statutes, compliant with, with our own objectives and just good practice, we've really separated this out. So the first project is an expansion of the north parking ramp. That original ramp was built in 1991, added on to at one time, and then about three years ago, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority purchased property next to it for future expansion. Now was the time that we're proposing that future expansion. The second project is just on the south side of the street, the location that is currently occupied by the center ramp and, and also the surface parking lot. Some people call it the Clancy Lot. It's been there for a long, long time. And that, that project on the south side of the street was given final zoning approvals last week. It consists of about 110 apartments, about 25,000 square feet of new commercial space, underground parking for the, for the apartment residents, as well as a level of underground parking for the general public. All the improvements on that side of the street are centered around a large civic plaza, something that doesn't exist at 50th and France today. So I had mentioned the symbiotic nature of these two projects. In essence, the city's, or the HRA's investment is about $11 million to expand the parking ramp. The developer's investment is about, is about 74 million. So one way of looking at this is to consider that, that $11 million investment unlocks the potential for the developer to, to invest over $70 million in our community. We're all pretty familiar with, familiar with the site. This is a before and after shot. Looking west on Market Street, this is taken if you're standing right in front of Spilon, looking west towards the post office. From the aerial, this is a site plan of the project, and the location is right at 50th and France in that northwest quadrant. It is worth noting that these nine parcels that we're speaking about are all either tax exempt or vacant. So they, from a, from a taxing perspective, there's only one way they can go, and that's up. Many of those properties have not paid taxes since the early 1970s. So the, the basic conditions of the sale can be summarized pretty, pretty briefly. It's a real estate transaction and sale to spur the redevelopment. When we set out on this effort, on this effort many months ago, it wasn't just a matter of selling for the highest possible price. It was a matter of putting a project together that delivered outstanding public benefits, and certainly the sales component is part of that. Over the months, we've negotiated the terms so that we provide as little risk to the HRA as, as necessary, recognizing that development, that risk is usually borne by developers. That's part of that real estate development process. So the closing on this real estate would happen in two occasions. The first would be a transfer of funds in January of 2018, when the HRA begins the construction of that parking ramp expansion. The second transfer would happen about nine months later, when the city finishes our parking improvement and can deliver to, to the developer two shell spaces, basically two raw spaces that they would then lease to tenants and put new businesses there. One of the other projects that's also happening simultaneously is the demolition and the cleanup of the old Hooton property. Last week, the city authorized or awarded a contract to, to complete that work, and that's also been in our work plan. And it's worth noting that that expense is not included in this budget. So we're, the budgets that we're presenting today are really looking from today forward. One of the other ways that we're minimizing risk to the HRA is recognizing that the developer takes that first step as far as making the investment. When they're successful, we would follow up and we would loan some money to help support the affordable housing units in the project, and also issue a TIF note to help reimburse them for part of the cost of all the public improvements that, that they'll be building for us. So the north ramp, I'll run through this fairly quickly. We intend to start construction on that north ramp in January of 2018, do some of the heaviest work in that winter season, which is the time that there's the least parking demand at 50th and France. That north ramp would then open to the public in its entirety around September of 2018. So our goal there was to get finished and get more parking available in advance of the holiday season for 2018, and it, we believe we can do that pretty, pretty easily. This graphic shows the elevation of the parking structure. With the additions, the red squares are those future retail spaces that we would sell to the developer, and the HRA would retain ownership of everything else around it. The budget for the parking expansion is around $10.7 million. That includes architectural, construction costs, management costs. We also have included a contingency, and while we hope not to, not to have to spend that, we just wanted to be realistic. We're not exactly certain where the budget prices will be in nine months. And at the end of the day, we'll end up with over 300 new stalls for public parking. We'd also have 10,000 square feet approximately of new commercial space on the tax rolls, and at least two businesses that now liven up that north side of the street, a street that is now pretty much, it's pretty quiet. The revenue sources for the HRA investment would largely come from the sales proceeds that the developer is providing. So we've negotiated to sell the land with, with a number of restrictions that I'll get into in a moment, for 6.1 million. The developer has also agreed to contribute about 600,000, which is the cost of building those shells, the gray concrete blocks, for the new commercial space. We've gone to our capital improvement plan, and we propose using about $3.8 million from the Centennial Lakes Fund. That was originally budgeted for some type of parking improvement at 50th and France back in 2015. We feel this is the right time to use those monies for this purpose. On the south side of the street, the schedule is a little bit different. This is the, the private developer's construction responsibility. While we would do the real estate transaction in January, the developer would not be allowed to start work until April, and the purpose there is that we don't want to shut down two parking ramps at once. We want to shut down one, get the other one back up and running, and then take down the second one. Their work would go throughout the year, finishing in fall of 2019. So there, the only construction impact during, during a holiday season would be in late 2018. There should be plenty of parking available, but there still would be construction, yellow tape and those types of stuff, those types of things around the apartment building. I'm going to run through the images of the project here. We've discussed those at length. The budget for the developer's portion is 74 million that I mentioned. There's a summary of what those costs are attributed to, and when we talk about public participation in the financing of this, what we use as a basis is some of the investment that the developer will make out of, on their nickel, out of their budget, that will be for the public benefit. So the first and foremost is the, the land price. They'll be committing 6.1 million that the HRA would then use to pay for that parking expansion. They'll also construct one level of underground parking that's available to the public. That construction estimate is, is 4.2 million. They'll be constructing an outside, an outdoor plaza, about 5,000 square foot in size just for the plaza, not to mention all the pedestrian ways that would be emanating from it. That's just under 2 million. And then one of the big issues is just the site prep. There's contaminated soils in the area. There's utilities and transformers that are right in the middle of everything. There's the demolition cost of that older ramp. I had brought a great visual. There is a chunk of concrete that fell out of the ramp a couple months ago and I had it on the table, but our janitorial crew must have cleaned it up because it's not here. But what I wanted to remind folks is that ramp was built in 1977, and despite the fact that we just put in, we invested about $2 million to repair all the ramps, all three of them, just a few years ago, it's still a 45-year-old, almost 50-year-old ramp. So it keeps needing improvements and repair. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Neal. So evident, Exhibit A, the parking ramp is still old despite the fact that we just painted it and put in new lights. The paint's peeling off already. We patched the concrete, and it's, it's old. So there's going to be ongoing maintenance requirements for that ramp if we don't be But I got off on a tangent, I'm sorry. Getting back to the south side project, the revenue sources for this project are primarily provided by the developer using a combination of equity and debt on the project. They also are applying for about $2.3 million worth of grants for the environmental cleanup, for some of the public realm elements. We, we feel that we'll be very competitive in those grant applications. And then there's, there's been a challenge that we've been addressing the last couple weeks about affordable housing. There's about a $2 million gap in the budget, which is basically the lost revenue when you have the affordable housing according to city policy. The developer has stepped up and, and after a lot of conversation, has agreed to defer about $400,000 of their fee, of their overall fee on the project, to help bring down the cost of that affordable housing. And this morning, staff from the city met with the Edina Housing Foundation to see if we could reach agreement on helping to fund the remaining $1.6 million in gap. And we're happy to, happy to announce that the HRA and the E, the Housing Foundation did reach agreeable terms. They did agree to fund half of that investment. So I've got details on a later slide, but the point that I want to make now is we think we can cover that gap and, and continue to make the project whole. And then the last large financing source is the use of tax increment financing, a tool that we, we don't use that often in, in Edina. We have high standards when it comes to using TIF, and staff feels that this is one of those cases where it's warranted. It's interesting to note that Edina's first TIF district was 50th and France in the early 70s. That's the public finance mechanism that was used to build this ramp back in 1977. It funded the construction of the walkways, the, the plazas, the realignment of Halifax and 49th and a Half with that curve. So that was the original tool, and since, since the time that that was created, it's, I mean, 50th and France has been transformed. It's, it's a great place, and we, we all know and appreciate that. So the proposal this evening is to fund using a TIF note, which is a pay-as-you-go note. We would reimburse the developer for actual costs that they incur up to 10.1 million. And I'll have a little bit more detail in just a minute. But last week, you challenged us with, with really doing better on the affordable housing. This has been a challenge. I'm not going to, I think no one would say it's been easy. So the, the proposal that we have in front of you tonight, I think largely satisfies if it doesn't hit every item that you'd asked, well, I think it does meet every item that you ask. It also meets all the recommendations and suggestions from the Housing, Housing Foundation. So the developer will dedicate 10% of the units in the project, or about 11 units, to be affordably priced for 15 years. Last week, we were at 10. Today, we're, we're back up to 15. We can price half of those apartments to households that earn no more than 60% of the median income. The other half of the units would be priced at, at an even lower rate, serving families that earn less than half of the median, median income. The developer has agreed to provide a mixture of one bedrooms and two-bedroom units, two two bedrooms and nine one bedrooms. And what this equates to from the, from the developer's perspective is, over 15 years, $2 million of lost revenue. Revenues that had they just put this on, up for rent at, for market rates, they're losing $2 million. So that, that's been the challenge, but we have all agreed that affordable house, housing is a goal that's worth fighting for and worth wrestling over a little bit. So the solution to, to fund that $2 million gap, again, I mentioned the developer has volunteered to defer $400,000 of their fee. The Edina Housing Foundation has agreed to participate in our loan up to $800,000. And then the, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority's Affordable Housing Fund would fund the remaining 800. So this, to clarify, is a loan. It's not a grant. We do get repaid. The funds would be provided after the developer completes the project, so our public money is not, is not at risk until there's absolutely something built and occupiable. We'll be receiving interest on the loan. It's, it's a preferred interest rate, so it'll be 1% to start with, and then at the end of the 15 years, we'll true it up to match inflation. So our, our goal here is not to keep these monies in, in the housing authority's banking account, but to get them on the street so that families can actually live in these units. And this loan allows us to do that and provides the benefit that in 15 years, when we're, when we're repaid, that money still has value. So we don't want to have our monies be, be beaten up by inflation. So we'll have inflation covered and still make this, this project possible. So that's the affordable housing piece. And then regarding the use of incremental taxes or TIF, there's about $14.6 million of TIF eligible, eligible expenses. Now, these are expenses that Minnesota state law deems eligible. Through our negotiations, we don't think that we should commit that full amount to the developer. We're recommending an, an amount not to exceed 10.1 million. But even with that amount, the reason that we, that we feel confident in our recommendation is that we've gone through the budget with the developer for six months. Throughout this whole process, the HRA has used the experts at Dorsey &amp; Whitney, our legal, special legal counsel, and Ellers Association, or Ellers Associates, our public finance advisors. They've gone through the numbers on countless occasions, and we're confident that but for the use of TIF to plug this $10 million gap, this project would die. It's simply, it's not, there's not enough profit in there for the developer to move forward without the use of these funds. And as I started off in my presentation, we try to keep the risk to the HRA at a minimum. So we'll be using what we call a pay-as-you-go note, which means that the developer has to perform first and deliver the project, and once they've delivered it to our satisfaction, we will then, then award them a note that will basically allow us to use their future taxes to help repay those public improvements. Also, in the, in the packet and in the updated redevelopment agreement, there's 190 pages of wonderful detail. I'm not going to go through it all tonight, but we're happy to answer any questions and go through it. One issue I do want to touch on, though, is the, is all the different easements. There's, I had mentioned this public plaza, so we have a permanent easement where the developer will build this plaza. The general public gets to enjoy it forever. The developer will also construct about 128 stalls of, of underground parking at their expense. We get to use it for the, for the public. Based on one of your comments from last week, we've also inserted language into the document to allow a future knockout, so that if any properties to the south of this site would change in the future, we'd have a door essentially, or a place where you could enter from this underground parking level into some future underground parking level. It's been, the wording is a little bit flexible because we don't know what development's going to look like in 30 years, but last week, you challenged us to make sure that we could work together with the neighbors, and we think, we think we can do that. When this project comes in for construction permits, we'll know what that looks like. Is it a single door? Is it a double door? Is it three doors? But the redevelopment agreement in front of us this evening obligates the, the HRA and the developer to work together with the neighbor to see if we can make such a thing Last week, we also provided additional detail about, about the public parking, and certainly it is going to be a different situation in 2018. There will be some construction. We realize that's disruptive, but both the developer and the HRA have made good faith commitments to make sure that we can minimize, if not alleviate, any disruption during that phase, and there's terms and conditions in, in this agreement that get to that fact. So I think I'll, I'll leave it at that. In summary, myself, other folks at, at the city have looked at this document for months. We've worked with our legal professionals. We've worked with our financial advisors. We've worked, I would say, in a true partnership with the developer. It's been, it's been a very sincere effort to work together for the public outcome, which is a lot different than a lot of developer meetings that I have where it's a developer goal that they want met. In this case, we were very clear that there are certain public outcomes we want to achieve, and the developer and his team of engineers, architects, their legal counsel, we really rolled up our sleeves, and I think we got to, to a point where we're all happy with it. So with that in mind, it's my recommendation that we move forward with this redevelopment agreement, that we move forward with the sale of the property. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have or may, may come up. Thank you.
Do any of the members of the HRA have questions for Mr. Newendorf, our legal counsel from Dorsey &amp; Whitney, or our financial advisors at Ellers? Mr. Nick Anhut is here this evening. Members? Anyone?
Not right now.
Okay. I had one question for you, Mr. Newendorf. Since we met last time, as I recall, you were still doing some work on the redevelopment agreement. One of the components was this affordable, with the discussions with the, the open discussions at that time, I think with the Edina Housing Authority. Was there anything else that you needed to wrap up? Because the agreement was partially finished at that point in time. Is there anything we need to know about that's happened in the interim, other than the housing discussion?
I think I've covered it. We, we've modified the exhibit that addresses the parking easement to allow for any future pass-through to the adjacent properties. We've modified pages that address the affordable housing. I think I mentioned that we had a very productive meeting this morning with the Edina Housing Foundation. So the terms that we, well, the terms in the document reflect what everyone agreed to, the developer, the HRA staff, and the housing authority. So everything you have in front, everything you have in front of you should be the final recommendation.
All right. Has it prompted any other thoughts from HRA members? All right. Thank you, Mr. Newendorf. Folks who may have questions for either one of you as we proceed. This is a public hearing matter for the HRA on the proposed sale and redevelopment of the properties at 3925, 3930, and 3944 Market Street. I'm going to open this matter up for public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and address the HRA with respect to any matter of concern to them? Any issues they wish to raise? Yes, sir? Please come forward. And if you go, if you use one of the side microphones, give us your full name and business address. That will be helpful, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Klaus Schreiner, and I am the managing partner of the 50th and France property at the southwest corner, on the northwest corner of 50th and France. You can make quality, whatever. In a career of 64 years as an architect, I've never felt this odd in a public hearing is because I'm trying to influence a project that has been enabled by the city when they decided that a six-story building in the center would be okay. But it's one of the people who was instrumental for the appearance of 50th and France today. I think I need to speak up. I was in charge of basically most of the land properties as you see them today. The area is very different, and it has a quaint and familiar character, a bit like out of a Morgan Lockwood painting. And I worked hard with, at that time, my partner, John Breidinger, to keep that. Everybody in the city likes the area for what it is. We all know change will happen, but it doesn't really, but it does really have to be to the tune of a six-story building. By doing what they plan, the developers will leave the shops at the north side of 50th Street and west of France Avenue with only 100 underground stores nearby. That will additionally be diminished by handicap parking. To make up for the shortfall, they offer parking stalls in the remodeled north ramp. That will be good for the new retailers on the south side of Market Street, but bad for the existing retailers. There is a lack of equilibrium that should be obvious, but it's not meant. There is a lack of equilibrium that should be obvious, but it is not mentioned. To add insight to injury, there will be a fair share of stores for residential units not used during shopping hours when there would be dearly needed for public parking. But this could be fixed with management. I suggest to limit the building in the center to four stories and add more underground parking in the center building. I do not suggest to kill the project. It's too late anyhow, but I would like to make it more friendly to the existing retailers who don't really speak up for some reason that I don't understand. Thank you for listening to me and giving me a chance to getting my point across.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Schreinger. And welcome back. Anyone else? Good evening.
Hi, I'm Lori Mullis. I live at 4825 Maple Road, and I have two concerns. One is related to the increased traffic. You know, we already have so much traffic that's coming down 50th and France as well. And we have a fair amount of cut-through traffic on my street and surrounding areas. So I have concerns about this project and the increased traffic, as well as the nature of the project. You know, a six-story, 110 unit, even though it's a little bit of a mixed-use project, a high-density nature doesn't seem commensurate with the quaint nature of 50th and France and what it is. I agree with the gentleman who just spoke that, you know, a six-story building just seems so out of character for the, for the area. So that's my other concern as well.
Thank you, Ms.
I was wondering also if there was a feasibility study, you know, about, you know, how many people would want to rent there and so forth with so much building out at, you know, by Southdale. There are so many rental units in Edina now. I'm just wondering if there's been any feasibility studies on that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, again. My name's Heather Wallace. I live at 4701 Townes Road. I am the current president of the White Oaks Improvement Association, though we do have, the residents of White Oaks have mixed opinions, although I would say overwhelmingly they're concerned about the density of the project. I'm concerned about the density of the project. I went back to the Vision Edina document and saw that they recommended high-density housing at Grandview and at Southdale, but not, there was no mention of 50th and France. And I think that's maybe partly because the two streets at 50th and France that come together are both two-lane streets. I would ask, as we go forward, and I've mentioned this before, if the city could work with the neighborhoods to come up with effective deterrence for cut-through traffic. Southeast Minneapolis or southwest Minneapolis has really effective deterrence. You cannot cut through, and we need to make it so you cannot cut through. And as long as I'm here, I wanted to say something about the affordable housing. I've listened to you promote the idea of this as a way to get affordable housing and that we can increase the density because it's a good thing, because we get affordable housing. But that affordable housing is only lasting for 15 years, and the increased zoning density is asking, is lasting forever. And the developers are saying that they don't get a typical return, but when you pressed them last week for details, we didn't get any details on what's typical. I would push back and say, this isn't a typical risk. It's 50th and France and Edina. And there should be a balance between that. And I would really like to see you guys push them for affordable housing that can be sustained, not just affordable housing for a couple of years and then it's gone. So, traffic and housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mary Brynley. I have a building that I own on 4930 France Avenue. Greta House is the name of the business. I had some questions, I did talk to Mr. Durinborough about, is that nobody has addressed the employee parking. Everyone says, where are the employees going to park when you turn on that ramp? And nobody has come up with an answer. I mean, we have employees, and then I'm curious about that. I just moved from a large house to a small house, to apartment, and I don't really think you're going to get one person to rent, to get a parking space. They're going to buy another one. Because if you have two cars and you can afford that rent, you're not going to have another parking space. So if you take those apartments and you double that, even don't double it, but conservatively say three-quarters of them are going to buy another space. And does it have, have they figured that out, the developers, that those, that space will be available for that second car? Because if it is, then we've lost a ton more parking. And I know from business that the people that come to 50th and France find, want parking to be convenient because they often, I hear all the time, if there's a space in front of your store, I'm going to stop. I hear that every day. And I am probably going to be luckier than some businesses because it's not, I am on France Avenue, but there are a lot of businesses that are going to be affected by this. And I just think that you somehow have the cart in front of the horse because I need, I want to know where employees are going to park. I want to know where we're going to park. I mean, you're trying to figure out how to valet customers where they're going to park. So I just think there should be some more answers for the people, that whole property.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Lavalour. I live at 7621 Edinburgh Way, Unit 2110 in Edina. Mayor Hublin, City Council, and city staff, as you know, I've been a volunteer for this city for many years, and I am passionate about public art. I am very excited about this project for many reasons. I think it's going to add significantly to our vibrant community. I like the public-private component. I love the large civic plaza. I think it would be a great space for future events. It'll be a central point for activities in our city. And as my husband would say, we are very pleased about the affordable housing component of this project. I'm also excited about the various types of public art that the investors are interested in bringing to this area. It's not just going to be the addition of one or two sculptures. There's going to be visual arts. There's going to be audio projections of Minnesota and local artists on the sides of buildings. And there's going to be decorative seating and decorative bike racks. And so I am, I am very much in favor of this, and I urge you to approve the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lavalour. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Susie Huglen, and I have a store at 3924 West 50th at Home &amp; Company. My husband was a developer of 5000 France, and we own the Edina Theater. I have no doubt that you will give final approval to this project tonight. The council has not listened to any of the concerns from anyone. From day one, you were going to do this project. Resident, property owner, business owner at 50th and France, whatever, no one wanted to listen to us. For whatever reason, you've gone with the developer. Six stories, no problem. We'll just change the zoning. Pause long enough to come up with a comprehensive plan for the entire area, considering Lund's Properties owns or has control of a good portion of the property on this corner. Didn't even pause a nanosecond when this was requested at one of the council meetings. Parking, no problem. The north ramp is the same distance as the Southdale target, Southdale Target parking ramp. I'm glad Councilman Fisher was able to sleep better after he thought about this. A better idea would have been to go across the street to the Galleria and looked at their parking, as this is more in keeping with the 50th and France shopping experience. We are not talking about parking at a big-box discount store. Their parking is either next to the building or under, in an open ramp. Congestion at 50th and France, another councilman's comment was just people in South Minneapolis cutting through. If there's a problem with them cutting through on the residential streets, no problem. They solved the Parkwood Knolls issue with the 169 closure. I live in Parkwood. They did stop the through traffic, but for those, those of us living in the area, it's inconvenient to get out of our own neighborhood. Good news for us, it's temporary. Bad news for 50th and France, it's permanent. Adding 35,000 square feet, and this number keeps changing, of new retail. Has any been out to Yzada lately? 85% of their new retail is vacant. There's businesses that have moved in and moved out. And we've already had, seen vacancies already on 50th and France. Councilwoman Brynle had called our office about the theater lights being out and it looked bad for Edina. What looks worse is the for rent signs now on 50th Street. And I want to know exactly what the plan is you keep telling us you're working on for the 50th and France customers during this construction period. Valet parking, really? Can you picture your spouse valet parking to run into Talbot's to get something, or if you want to pick up a meal at the Amigos? Not going to happen. By your own drawings, you could see 56 people in your public space. It's the size of my store. This is not a big space. Obviously, we're not going to have the pumpkin fest or tree lighting in this space. Much of the public spaces that you're touting are simply wider walkways, which are to be shared with motor vehicles for deliveries and drop-off, for which the property owners and ultimately the business owners are going to have to pay to maintain. It is obvious that none of you have been in the retail business. There's only so much you can keep charging us and expect a business to survive. And what really ticks me off is the fact that you have spent millions of dollars to evaluate and upgrade the three ramps. And now we're going to bulldoze the middle ramp because you have a better idea. You want those of us who are business owners to continue to pay on that 20-year assessment for something you're going to demolish. I really don't think that's fair, and the courts may have to decide that issue. But for us to continue to pay for that is ridiculous.
All right.
Hi, my name is Brad List, representing Lund Food Holding, Inc. My comments are probably quite a bit more specific. I've been working with Bill this afternoon on, I read through the redevelopment agreement. And the reason I'm here is representing the adjacent property that wants access through the, you know, through the parking ramp. And in reading through the language, I'm just, I'm a little uncomfortable that it leaves some leeway for the easement maybe not to be in place. So my only comments are is that whatever gets in the development agreement, I'd like it to, you know, make sure that the, that the easement agreement is, is, you know, absolute and perpetual, and that it's at no cost for the value of that access to the adjacent property owners. I mean, obviously, there could be some costs that end up having to be covered, but that there's no payment for the right to that access. And then the other expectation that we have is that, you know, that the properties that would be next to that would have the ability to do two levels of underground parking, similar to the way that the collaborative is. So, so again, my comments fairly specific as looking through the document, but just, we just want to make sure that that, that access is, you know, is an absolute and that it's perpetual. Thank you.
Members of the HRA and mayor. My name is Jim Stromberg, and I live at 3930 West 49th Street, immediately adjacent to the proposed project. I've been in favor of a renewal of Market Street since moving to Edina. I've thought of it as the alleyway to 50th and France, and in dire need of attention. With the city owned two parcels on the north side of the street, it only seemed logical that some kind of development should and would occur. When I first heard of the group called the Saturday Buell Development Crew, I wondered what their vision might be. It didn't take long to see that they were not content to simply fill in the old Edina Realty and Huttenkleider sites, but that they had an idea that went far beyond that. What most impressed me with these guys was their willingness to meet and interact with the residents of the surrounding neighborhood. They held meetings. They met with individuals and with groups, and fine-tuned their ideas with suggestions from the people, excuse me, that would be living with this new development. These are Edina guys. They understand that 50th and France is special, and they recognize that what gets done on Market Street simply has to enhance what we already have. Their plan and their proposal meets that vision, and it should. I urge you to move this project forward. Manage this project to make sure it enables the businesses already in the district to continue to prosper and be the watchdog for the neighbors to ensure that the proper blend of residential and commercial can use, continues to exist together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stromberg. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Need a second? Is there, we have a motion, a second to close the public hearing, discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. Carried. Similar to a council meeting after a public hearing, we typically have questions for staff. One of the questions that comes to mind is, I think, for Ms. Brynley, who is at Wonderful Greta House shop, and she was running about employee parking. And we haven't seen her at a matter before us, and she may not know about the increase in the number of parking spots over and above what's used down there now, which includes employee parking. So, Mr. Nundorf, do you want to address that issue in terms of the net increase in proposed parking, if this HRA should approve this matter and the council approves the matter?
Yes, happy to. So there's two ways to answer that question. When the project is finished, we'll have, now I'm blanking on the numbers, we'll have 140-some new parking spaces compared to what we have today. Those spaces would be available for customers, for, for employees on a, you know, first-come basis. The trickier part of this whole conversation is where do the employees park during the construction phase? And at this point, we don't have a precise location or address or those types of things, but we purposely phased this project so that the, the biggest reduction in parking happens when, or happens at the time of the year where there's the least parking demand. And, and the demand varies wildly. If you look at, at the number of people that park in those ramps in November and December versus the people that park there in January through May, it's radically different. So that helps us. But there will be times where we do some off-site parking. The developer has been talking with at least three different local churches to see if they can leave space on their, on their nearby parking lots. They've, the developer has committed to providing a valet service during those peak hours when there's the, you know, the biggest demand for parking. At this point, there are no specific answers. If approved, that means we need to really roll up our sleeves and start figuring out the details in particular. But the developer is committed to working with valet. In fact, their approved zoning plans show the locations of those drop-off and pickup areas. We've also talked about, talked about a shuttle, but we're not sure if that's, if that would be as well-received. And the developer has committed to the fact that during the construction phase, the workers, the, the construction workers will be parked off-site and bussed in or shuttled in so that we don't add more bodies or more vehicles to that parking demand. So that's, that's not a complete answer, but we're confident that both the HRA and the developer has agreed to sit down and determine which parking lot exactly are the employees going to be parking at, which levels of the, of the remaining ramp will they, will be available to them. So I would imagine that we would have a more precise answer in October. We've already started conversations with the business association to see if we can start scheduling some, some focus group meetings, because certainly the demands of a professional business like a dentist versus a retail business versus a restaurant, the employee demands are much different. And we want to sit down with them and start learning how we can best make this work.
All right. I don't know if Ms. Huglen was here last time when we talked briefly about this, but when her, she and her husband toured on several buildings at the corner of 50th and France and built 5000 France, which is a beautiful condominium project. We fenced off part of the street, I think, at least in the, on the southbound side of France Avenue, and then we had construction workers off-site. I don't know if you had a chance to look at that situation to see what was done when, when they worked on that site, but it was an efficient plan that I think was put in place by the city and the, and the developer on that. city and the developer on that, and it was probably over a year and a half while that was being torn down and reconstructed. So I would encourage you to take a look at that if this passes this evening. Member, why don't you just stay right here? Not member, but one of the neighbors from the White Oaks Association, Heather Wallace, raised a question she's raised before, and that is, and this is something the council's been thinking about, is how do we work with the neighborhoods to reduce cut-through traffic? And why don't you touch on that briefly again, because I know that's at the forefront of council members' minds?
Sure, sure. So based on the comments that were raised and the concerns that were expressed a few months ago, the city did hire SRF Consulting to look not only at the traffic at the main intersection, 50th and France, but to look at that cut-through traffic. They found a couple of things. There was cut-through traffic in the past, there's a little bit of cut-through traffic today, and in the future, there probably will also be some more cut-through traffic. But the challenge is minimizing it and controlling it, especially during the construction phase, but during, you know, when the project is finished as well. So there are several recommendations that were submitted. City Engineer Milner walked through those, I think on June 6th at that meeting. But some of the simple solutions can be temporary speed bumps, a nuisance to everybody, whether you're a resident on the street or you're the cut-through person. But that can be an effective way to deter people from cutting through. Traffic enforcement as well can be an effective ways to have some targeted enforcement to let folks know that they shouldn't be speeding, they should stop at the stop signs, do all those right things that we're supposed to be doing as drivers. And then one of the other suggestions was to put speed monitors so that people that are driving through, if they, you know, if there's a big sign that says, hey, you're doing 35 and the speed limit's 25, that can help as well. So I think those are some of the simple things that can be done during the construction phase. But overall, as far as any permanent improvements into the neighborhood, I don't believe the SRF study recommended any. They did note that about eight or 10 years ago, when those streets were rebuilt, there were many traffic calming suggestions that were recommended, but they were taken out of the project at the request of the neighbors.
I think that was actually in the Country Club neighborhood. So what I'm suggesting is that years ago, like we did with the Country Club neighborhood, we engaged the neighborhood itself to help us come up with the right kinds of solutions that would maximize the effect of, say, minimizing cut-through traffic, speed and volume. I think that's what we're all interested in, is reducing speed and volume. So let's make sure we get the neighbors engaged if this passes, because I know that we've had some preliminary studies done, but they'll have some great ideas too, just like they did in the Country Club.
Thanks.
The other concern that Ms. Wallace raised, and incidentally, the traffic concern was one Ms. Muller raised as well, was the affordable housing. You know, the question being, why 15 years? Why not in perpetuity? What's -- what do you want to talk about standard practices relative to affordable housing?
Sure, sure, happy to. So this is a question that comes up a lot. When the city adopted their affordable housing policy in 2015, one of the recommendations and one of the big discussion points was, how long should it be affordable? The longer it's kept affordable, the more costly that is. In the industry, in the affordable housing industry, one of the typical terms of affordability is 15 years. I'm not sure what's magic about 15 years versus 18 years versus 13 years, but that's a pretty standard term in the industry. There are some projects that are affordable for longer terms. For example, the 66 West Apartments that just opened up across from Southdale Mall, those will be affordable for 30 years, but that financing structure was completely different. Those unit, it's a whole different project. The expense of that project is radically higher than this one because you are keeping the rents low for so many years. So we thought we would stick with the industry standard of 15 years, although we did insert into the redevelopment agreement a provision that at year 15, the developer and the city commit to sitting down and asking the question, should we renew this term? Should we extend it out another 15 years? It's tough to make that obligation today. It's hard to know what's going to -- what the world's going to be like in 15 years, but there is that provision inserted so that both parties have agreed to sit down together again at the end of the term and decide, is it, should we extend the loan? Do we need to refinance? Do we want another five years? Do we want no more years? Do we want another 15? So we have options, we have that flexibility.
All right. And would there be any reason we couldn't revisit this issue towards the end of its 15-year term to see if we can strike some kind of a --
That's exactly what we should do.
-- developer with uncontinued affordability?
Yep.
All right. One of the concerns that Ms. Hugland raised was that merchants are going to be expected to continue to make ramp improvement payments that were assessed against them for their 20% share of the ramp improvements, even though the middle ramp is coming down. Seems to me a two-part question. First of all, are the merchants going to be assessed at all for any of the ramp work that occurs if this project is approved?
No, no, they're not. And that's, we try to break from the past practice. What we've done historically is have all of the property owners pay about 20%, so exactly 20% of those capital improvements. So when they built that center ramp, when they built the north ramp, when they expanded the north ramp, all the property owners in the area contributed to that, and their assessments went up significantly for a few years. Based on the fact that we did just do the improvements at 50th and France, we invested, I think, a total of $4 million, and we ended up assessing about $2 million of that. We cleaned up the south ramp, we redid the pavers on almost every street, cleaned up the center ramp, cleaned up the north ramp, and we heard loud and clear from the property owners that that budget was at the top of their threshold. In fact, if you recall back in 2014, we had suggested doing more work, and the business owners really let us know that that was the maximum assessment that they could stomach. So that's why we're leaving it. And with this proposal, we have the public improvements that would typically be borne by the property owners will be 100% funded by the HRA or the developer, so none of the surrounding property owners will see any additional assessment.
But they'll continue to make those payments until their -- until the term of that agreement is completed?
That's correct, yep. That was a 15-year term for that loan or for that assessment. The majority of the work went to the south ramp. Some did go to the center, but as I mentioned, the paint's peeling after three seasons, and we have spoken with a contractor and architect. We're going to try to reuse those LED lights that we just installed. We think they're new enough and easy enough to disassemble and reuse those, which will save money on the budget. We think we can also reuse some of the plantings at the owner's -- or at the property owner's request. Last time, we included some pretty mature-sized trees. We think we can reuse those. So things that we can reuse, those monument signs, we will. We do want to be reasonable with what we do with those pieces, but the property owners are still required to pay that assessment. That's what they agreed to three years ago.
Okay. Thank you. Both Mr. Freiger and Ms. Hugland expressed concern about some of the merchants down there. Mr. Freiger wondered where some of them were. We've actually had input from the 50th and France Business Association. In fact, they voted in favor of it, didn't they, in all these improvements?
We received a letter of support from the Board of Directors, correct.
Right. And I think for this council, one of the concerns we've had is that the merchants have told us their foot traffic is down at 50th and France. And that was, at least in my mind, one of the reasons that we looked hard at this Buell Saturday idea is the next iteration of the revitalization of 50th and France, in particular to Mr. Stromberg's point about taking 49 and 1/2 Street, not having it be an alley to 50th and France anymore, but having it actually have its own level of vitality. And then, Mr. List, I hope I pronounced your name correctly, representing Lund Foods Holdings, good points, I think, make sure the easement agreement is absolute and perpetual. And I thought he raised an interesting point about no cost to adjacent property owners for access to the easement. That would certainly, I would think, be our intention, is that this easement is there for multiple purposes, including access by adjacent merchants without being charged for it.
The current -- so, Mr. List and I spoke this afternoon on a few occasions. So the current language is pretty general in nature, and I can look it up if you like, but --
Do you want our legal counsel to come up with you? Because that's who's going to have to draft this language.
Well, the language is drafted, unless you want it changed, but the --
Well, to the point that it's general in nature, I want to make sure that it's going to protect merchants that are adjacent. I think everybody up here does. There isn't going to be a situation that evolves here where Lund's Foods Holdings, for example, or somebody else like Mr. Freiger that wants access for his buildings isn't going to have it without paying a price for it.
Right, right. So let me walk through the way that we structured the easement. So right now, this is a new topic for us, so the underground structure is not designed. If approved tonight, we'll start that design. The development agreement does mandate that the developer work in good faith and study the feasibility of where such openings would be located. Are they -- are there -- is there one that's double-wide? Are there two that are single-wide? All those questions, we honestly just don't know at this time. We haven't designed it. But the intention is that in the next couple of weeks, the next couple of months, we would do that. Of course, we would meet with the adjacent property owners to see what their intentions are. But at this point, when I spoke with Mr. List earlier, there's no plan to change those adjacent parcels anytime soon. So it's challenging to write language for something that isn't going to happen in the foreseeable decades, potentially. So that's why --
I don't think that's the only thing that he was talking about. I think he was talking about, I'll call it the Wunner for the wider walkways, that may have vehicular traffic on them from time to time, in and out of the back of those stores, storefronts on the south side.
Sure. So on the plaza, that I did not have a conversation about the plazas, but the plazas are protected by a perpetual, permanent public easement, so anyone can use that Wunner, whether you're walking, whether you're on a bicycle, whether you have deliveries, whether it's the garbage truck, whether it's the recycling guy, any business that's down there, any property that's down there has access to that plaza and to that Wunner and to all the sidewalks. So that is a permanent, perpetual easement, no cost, no charge, so that we think is addressed.
I heard the concern being with respect to the underground parking. That the easement be -- he was concerned that the mushy language might not make it absolute, so he wanted it to be absolute, he wanted it to be perpetual and free. And those were the concerns that I heard.
So the way that we address the language is, let's see.
What page are you on?
Yeah, let me jump there. So this is an --
Member Stottem, yeah, thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's Appendix D, as in David, D3.
I commend you, Mr. Nundorf, for having such mastery of the document.
We've worked on this quite a bit in the last 48 hours.
Breakthrough panels?
Yeah, it's on the bottom of the page, Breakthrough Panels, section 1.2. Midway through the paragraph, after the underlined phrase that says, "adjacent parcel parking facility," "The developer and the city agree to negotiate in good faith with the adjacent parcel owner regarding an easement agreement to provide access to and through the south site and the public parking level." So that shows our intention. And then there's another phrase in here that we added. If you turn the page to the top of Page D4, the second sentence, it starts off saying, "any such easement agreement," and this refers to a future easement agreement with the adjacent owner that may be negotiated next month or next decade, we don't know, "but any such easement agreement shall be on terms that are acceptable to both the developer and the city in their commercially reasonable discretion with respect to the following, the grant of the easements." And then I think what Mr. List had concern with was the parenthetical phrase, "including term thereof and consideration therefore." What we added was this additional phrase, "if any," because certainly we're not committing to a monetary consideration, but at this point, we don't know what we're designing. I mean, so far in the last week since we've been working on this, we've found that there's utilities that are buried in between the Lund's property and this property. So if those have to be moved, we're not sure if, do they go up? Do they go down? Do they go south? Do they go north? We don't know. And we're not sure what's that cost and who bears that cost. If we need to tear up the Wunner when a future project happens, is that a developer cost? Is that the adjacent owner's cost? Does the city pay that bill? There's so many uncertainties that we felt, after working with the developers' council and the HRA's council, that the more general language is preferable at this point. You know, certainly, I put a lot of faith in the term about reasonable discretion. I mean, certainly, we want to work in good faith, we want to work with the neighbors, but when we don't know what we're designing, it's hard to write a legal contract that has finite boundaries. So that's how we ended up with the language that's here this evening.
Yeah, I can actually see all of that and understand all of that. I don't want to speak for other members here, but it seems to me that on the D3, you could have some language that cleared up this issue as to whether or not, you know, although you've got these defined costs and you've got costs that can't be quite identified yet, that the cost of using the easement itself, there would be no cost attached to the use of the easement itself. I think that's what Member Stewart is heading towards, and that was what Mr. List was heading towards.
Possibly. There won't be a cost, but again, we don't know what we're designing. Is that future parking structure, is it 100 cars? Is it 300 cars? Is it 500 cars? If it's only 100 cars, it's no problem, in my opinion. But what if it's on the higher end? Unless I get something very, very high, like 500 cars, what does that do to the entrance system of this new ramp that we're building? Right now, we've got two lanes in, or one lane in, one lane out. So if we overburden that existing system, does it still work for everybody else?
Fair point.
Again, we just don't know what we're designing in the future. So if we had some limits about what, you know, we could try to engineer this further and say that we're limiting the use to, you know, 243 vehicles and such-and-such number of entries per day, and we could try to over-design it, but again, we don't know what we're even designing. That's why at this point, we prefer the more general language.
So what happens in the event you don't get to mutuality? Because you've got language in here that says it has to be on terms acceptable to both the developer and the city, and they don't agree with what we want to do or vice versa?
That is an excellent question.
Then what?
And I'm going to put one of our attorneys, Alex Selke, on the spot. But we did address that in the body of the document, and I don't know that page number.
All right.
Do you want to address that, Alex?
He just mentioned to me, Council Alex Selke from Dorsey and Whitney.
Alex, what's your last name?
Selke, S-E-L-L-K-E.
Thank you.
He just made the kind of charge for the use of these. So I think we can clarify that.
Mr. Selke, just to be clear, you represent whom?
I represent the city and the HRA. Now, can you repeat the question?
All right, so let's get back here. So I had asked, or the chair had asked about the -- So, I had asked, or the chair had asked about the situation where what if in the future we don't reach agreement, where the developer and the city are not in agreement on the use of this easement? My recollection is that we inserted a paragraph in section 5.7 to address that.
Well, 5.7--
Mr. Selke, would you step up closer to the microphone, please?
Yep. 5.7 in the redevelopment agreement addresses negotiation of the feasibility of this breakthrough panel that still needs to be engineered, as Bill was saying, after this agreement is entered into, but prior to construction. So, that is, that concerns the feasibility of the project currently, putting in the breakthrough panels for potential expansion of the adjacent parcel if and when that parcel is developed with underground parking. But if your question is to how, in the future, when this adjacent parcel is being constructed and we don't, can't come to an agreement on how we are using this breakthrough panel and the respective rights and obligations of the parties going through the underground parking?
Right. In terms of accessing the easement, you know, and allocation of potential cost for that? But if you can't come to an agreement, then what?
It's not specifically addressed in here of how that will, it'll go through the, as I envision, it'll go through the typical city processes we've been going through the last few months, is we'll look at the project that's being proposed and, like all of this, negotiate in good faith to try to come up with a solution that works for both parties when we have a project in front of us.
Yep. You did the same thing I was thinking about, Mr. Nundorf. I want to get Mr. Mashi up here, get his perspective on this too, as a developer's attorney.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the City Council, I'm Pat Masha with Briggs &amp; Morgan, representing the developer. And just, just to clarify some of the issues here, I think this is a concept that's easy in concept, but having built underground parking before, sometimes from an engineering standpoint, when you're building an underground structure that's holding up the sides as well, you have to engineer the design first. There is no intention on the developer's part to charge the adjacent property owner for use of the easement. But the fact that we haven't gone into the design process and the engineering to determine how exactly this needs to be built so that we can do the bump-out panels is the difficult question to answer right now. So, to be clear, there are just a lot of unknown costs that, to make this work, the developer is going to likely have to bear to put the bump-out panel in. That still needs to be designed, but the use of the easement itself and the actual grant of the easement would not be consideration to the developer. But there are a lot of things that we just have to work through from a design and engineering standpoint to understand what the issues all are for the developer.
Good. I think that helps us a great deal with that representation on behalf of the developer. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Selke. Let's just stay there. Mr. Nundorf, I don't know if we're, the other council members may have heard--
I got one.
Yep, Member Brindle.
Lori Mullins mentioned feasibility study. Is there a way to know the demand for residential at 50th and France?
There's a way to make a projection about demand. So, the city has not done an independent market study for the project. It's been our practice that that's the role of the private investors, to do that study. So, we have not done one independently. And let me, hang on a second. Let me see if the developer would want to address that, because they're the ones that are making this investment in our community.
Sure.
Well, you gentlemen, address this question. Perhaps you could also simultaneously address a very similar question Ms. Hoagland asked, saying that the Wayzetta retail shops have a lot of vacancies. So, maybe at the same time you answer whether there's demand for the apartments, you could answer whether there's demand for the retail shops.
Members of the HRA and Mayor Brent Rogers, one of the developers, Saturday Properties, and I live at 5413 Halifax Lane, to speak a little bit to the, what we feel is the, is the demand, and we feel there would be very strong demand for a, for a project like this, and that's based on, you know, 16 years of development experience, being involved in over 2,000 units of residential development, and we currently Saturday manages over 1,500 units in the, in the Twin Cities metro area. So, we have looked at demand for similar product types, as well as just what the, what the demographics are at 50th and France, and, you know, living a few blocks away, being, being very familiar with those. So, we're very confident in the demand for a project of this size.
For both the residential and the retail?
I'll speak to the retail. Pete Dinevich, Buell Investors, 5100 Eden Avenue, Suite 317. We're excited about the retail at 50th and France and extending that to Market Street. In fact, we have a list of about 77 tenants that have an interest in making 50th and France their home. Those tenants represent about 10 times the space that we can accommodate in this development alone. So, as we think about our ability to fill that retail with tenants that are both complementary to the surrounding area, but then also successful in their own right, we have great, great confidence that this project will meet the needs of today's retailers. In answering the question that Mrs. Hoagland posed relative to Wayzetta, order of magnitude, this project, again, is 35,000 square feet, which is about the size of Lund's at 50th and France. The Wayzetta project is about 110,000 square feet, so dramatically more significant. And as we think about the ways that this folds into the community, I think there are some distinctions relative to the ways that retailers can interact with the surrounding community. So, we're excited about it. We've seen quite a bit of demand. And to piggyback on what Brent said, you know, following last week's rezoning approval, what we heard from the community was actually proactive outreach by a number of residents saying, "I don't see many options in town. And in fact, if you could put us on a list for renting space, we'd like to, we'd like to get notified when, when you start looking to lease space." So, we believe that there's substantial demand on both fronts.
Mr. Dinevich, with respect to the potential tenant interest that you have had, and the number is impressive, do you think that interest might have any spillover effect to some of the empty storefronts that are in the 50th and France area presently that Ms. Hoagland expressed concern about?
I can't speak to, speak to the specifics of those spaces, but I do know that relative to tenant interests that we've seen, they believe in, in the overall demographics, they believe in the sales that can be generated out of 50th and France. And so, naturally, I would believe that that's not specific to our project alone, but, but can translate into other, other spaces.
All right. Thank you. Other questions for the developer team?
So, and I believe there have recently been, I think, four different closures now at the 50th and France among retailers or restaurants. That doesn't change your viewpoint on this, or somehow, how do you think the development will change the, what seems to be the negative trend right now?
Yeah, I think as we've, as we've talked about going through the rezoning process, in a world of e-commerce, we believe, and I think it's proven out throughout the country, that experience-based retail is critically important, stuff that cannot be replaced or purchased online, but rather, needs to be experienced in person. And so, when we look at the way that this project has been developed, really centered around creating a place for the community, it feels like, when we couple that with some of the retail demand that we have from, you know, folks that, you know, might have a class that you need to go to, to, to experience it, or a restaurant that cannot be just purchased online, those sorts of things, I think, allow for that retail demand to really excel here. So, the recipe is centered around the experience, and I think by providing that, we really allow for those vacancies to find new life.
Another question for you, but it slipped my, Member Stewart, anything else?
I do not.
Okay. Anyone else on the development team is up here? Oh, I know what it was. So, we're adding 10,000 square feet of retail on the north side of, proposed to be added on the north side of 49 and 1/2 Street or Market Street, adjacent to and really part of the north ramp that will add another level of parking. One of the concerns has been that, gee, that's just too far for people to walk over to the stores along France Avenue, and they just aren't going to do it. And is that really a good idea to be swapping out the parking we have right now in ramps, in the middle ramp, for more parking in the north ramp where people have to walk further, even though they might be enjoying some of that retail on the north side of the street? What are your thoughts on that?
I think from our standpoint, overall, the parking count is maybe the biggest driver. The ability to provide parking for clients that are coming into the district is critically important. I think that's why this proposal serves to address that need, something that I think you as, as the HRA had identified in the RFP process as being a really important dynamic. As we think about the travel distance, you know, naturally, there are, there are some pushes and pulls with regard to where that parking is located. And it's terrific if you can have parking immediately adjacent to your, to your store. But as we think about the way that this district operates, it is so much built upon a pedestrian experience, something that draws people in and through. And that's really where Ms. Valuer, Barbara Valuer, talked about earlier tonight, about really seeing art as drawing people in and around the district. I think the, last week, Councilmember Fisher presented at the, at the city council meeting something that, that we also share, which is this, this view of how does parking set up relative to that retail storefront? And when compared to other stores throughout the city, case in point, last week was Target, you know, that travel distance is not, is not as significant as many of us maybe perceive it to be at 50th and France when compared to what we do on a regular basis. So, I believe that that's mitigated quite a bit, and I believe through good design and a pedestrian focus, we can offset some of that concern.
Okay, good. Does that prompt any other questions for members? Did anyone, yes, Member Stewart?
The other question that Ms. Mullis asked, she was concerned for the loss of the quaint atmosphere at 50th and France. I think, well, I'd like you to speak about the design and whether or not this becomes so dense that it becomes a more urban feel rather than a village feel, if you will. Just like to hear your thoughts on that.
Sure. As we've thought about the design, if you'll recall, back in the RFP process, boy, the design was nine months ago now, we looked at this project as really having almost one style, and carried that through the entire development. And some of the feedback that we received from the community and from council and the HRA through Sketch Plan was to modify that plan to reflect more of the scaled-down storefront and, and building system that you see throughout the 50th and France district. What you, what you have in front of you today, and, and as approved last week, was a building that reflects really four to six different structures, or aims at delivering that feel that, that again, mimics what you find throughout 50th and France. So, we've delivered something that I think emulates a lot of the Mansard roof architectural language that exists within 50th and France. We've tried to provide step backs from the first to second level to really provide a better pedestrian experience. And if you'll recall from Mr. Nundorf's presentation, the cantonary lighting that extends over 49th and 1/2 and all of the various plantings have really been aimed toward delivering that, that pedestrian and consumer experience that, that does maintain that charm, while also providing the necessary density to be able to really make a project work in this fashion.
So, the, then I'd like to address how that affects the height issue. The first speaker, his first name is Klaus, I didn't catch the last name, but he asked about whether we could have this be limited to a four-story development at the center instead of six. Tell me about what happens to the project if we limit you to four stories.
Well, I think that, I think that can be answered in a couple of different ways, but as we've thought about this project, we've really put our, our best foot forward in a financial way. So, both in terms of risking a significant amount of capital, but also driving that overall return down. So, you know, one of the, I believe it was Ms. Wallace from White Oaks brought up the point of what is the overall return, and I'm happy to say it in this forum, you know, we are talking about a low 6% type return on cost and teens-type IRR, which as we, as we look across the marketplace and we do that on a, on a regular basis, that is on the very low end of, of any market acceptable term or, or terms that a bank would finance. So, to answer your question about the four stories versus six, to the extent that six or two stories were taken off of this building, we would not be able to make that financially, financially feasible while delivering the public infrastructure that's contemplated here. So, it's a, it's a trade-off that we've really tried to strike a balance between the public infrastructure and, and then also the kind of experience and height.
So, you'd probably be forced to fill in more of the proposed public spaces with building that would be rentable space?
We showed a video in, I think, the rezoning process that depicted, you know, what would the same square footage look like at four stories versus six. And our aim throughout this has been to deliver an experience that can accommodate the events that our families enjoy, like Pumpkin Fest and, and Edina Art Fair and all those, the tree lighting ceremony. To do that and to provide that, that plaza, as well as the walkways, we felt it was beneficial to, instead of maximizing the footprint, maximize that experience, and in doing so, push that, that, that height up and test it against what we see in the surrounding area. So, we, in the rezoning submittal, included a cross-section of the entire district that evaluated 49th Street apartment building heights relative to 5,000 France building and then our proposed project. We feel that as neighbors to this, this is something that we're comfortable with and fits.
We also ought to point out, we don't just need to take your word for what kind of return this is. Mr. Anhut is here, and I believe Ailer's pretty carefully combed through your numbers and will confirm that level of return and risk.
Would welcome it.
Other questions for Mr. Dinevich? Amber Fisher?
This question might be more for Bill, if that's all right. So, I'm, have you thought about, has the team talked about, I know it's sort of a detail for later, but sort of the management of parking? And the reason I ask is, you know, we're going to have fewer spots in the center, though there are going to be climate control, you know, out of the weather, very convenient spots. It's like roughly 128, I think, public spots there. And the concern was mentioned by a few people that, you know, a lot of those are going to be left for handicap parking and, and other things. It occurred to me that we're going to have plenty of spots, we've talked about this, plenty of parking in this district. And the question came up, where will employees park? Well, I would hope that any business in this district today has their employees park in the least convenient parking spots in the district, right? Because the whole idea is to make it as convenient as possible for the customers. And in this scenario, I would think they would be parking wherever, you know, not in the, the prime center underground parking. So, assume that. And then, but my question is, is there a way, and we're not going to solve it tonight, but to think about how you manage those spots in a way that maybe they're not, you can't park there for three-- park there for three hours. It's more maybe one hour. So those dental visits and those doctor visits and those quick stops at Talbot's or whatever, they're turned over much different than, say, the north and the south ramp. And I would go so far as to wonder if we shouldn't be creating a system where you even pay to get out unless you have some sort of little voucher from any Edina retailer. So when you go into that shop, you know, you get that thing and you get out free. And when you're going over to Minneapolis where they're not paying for any of this, you actually pay for parking. And I think we have to start thinking about that to make sure that we are making these spots as convenient as they can possibly be and turned over as best they can.
We're definitely thinking about that. We're not ready to make a final solution tonight. But I would agree with your assessment that when this project is finished, that first layer of underground parking is going to be the prime, most highly prized customer spot. So today, we allow employees to park in the upper levels of that center ramp. I would imagine that that would go away, that the center ramp would be focused specifically on customers. We have internally debated the merits of a short-term parking. Is it one hour? Is it three hours? Is it five hours? We really need to talk with the businesses to understand what works best. While the five-hour parker, you know, takes a space for three times as long as others, they oftentimes spend five times as many dollars there. So the retailers like that. So we're not ready to make a decision tonight, but certainly, we do not envision employee parking in that lowermost level. And similarly, on the north ramp, we currently allow employees to park anywhere on that ramp, all day, all night, pretty much. And I would imagine that the lowest level of that north ramp would now be converted to be customer-only. Again, if our goal is to make this a place that, you know, really appeals to customers, we want them to park on that main level, park the car, walk down the sidewalk, across the street, wherever they're going, and then push the employees to the upper levels that will now have elevators, heated stairways, all those things that we don't really enjoy so much today. On the south ramp, we don't envision a lot of change there. But this is certainly a topic that we hope to take up with the focus groups later this summer and the fall. Each year, we update our employee permit policy. And that sets the price of permits, how many we have, where employees can park. One of the ideas we're suggesting at this point is that for the construction year, I think we still want to have permits for the employees, but right now, I'm bouncing the idea around whether or not permits are free. I mean, for the employees who are in the construction phase, you know, some weeks they'll park on the first floor because they can, other weeks, they might have to park on the rooftop because the first floor is under construction. There'll be a fair amount of inconvenience. And I've heard from a lot of business owners that they really prize their employees and they don't want to lose their good employees for something as silly as a $10 parking permit. So when we come back to you this fall, one of the options on the table is perhaps free or reduced parking for employees during this phase. So we have given it some thought, but I can guarantee we'll be giving it much more thought in the months ahead.
Good. Other questions for staff, for legal counsel or financial advisors? Otherwise, we could go into council discussion. I actually had a, I was going to use, ply Member Fisher's memory here, but it seemed to me about 10 years ago, we were both part of a group of, there was a group of land-use professionals here from all over the country for Lambda Alpha, is it? And 50th and France was a neighborhood that they toured as part of that visit to the Twin Cities. And I recall Reese Pekans from URS, who was a Lithuanian gentleman that designed the park system at Centennial Lakes, to have that, the reason it has that European flavor and feel is because that was his background, of course, and came here as an immigrant. And he showed us a photo of 50th and France, and he said, "What do you see here that's different than what's actually here?" And I know I've mentioned this before, but I remember all of us kind of looking at this photo, and maybe you weren't part of that conversation, but what he finally said was, "Well, here, I added two more stories to 5,000 France." And once you saw that he'd added two more stories to 5,000 France, I remember all these years, having the recollection that, you know, it actually looked better at six stories than it did at four stories, even though it looks good at four stories. It seemed to reflect more the character of the neighborhood in a way, and you'd find that an odd expression with height, but it was really quite remarkable. And that was exactly what he intended, is that 50th and France could handle a little bit more height and still be the charming sort of neighborhood that it is at the time we visited down there with this group of professionals from all over the country that were admiring 50th and France. I don't know if you recall that conversation or not. It certainly, as you can tell, stuck with me all these years. Any other comments from members on this matter as we prepare to decide whether we want to approve by voice vote the entering into the redevelopment agreement? Otherwise, I could entertain a motion with respect to the redevelopment agreement? Is there someone who wishes to move the, move authorizing the chair and the executive director to execute the redevelopment agreement that we have in front of us this evening?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second discussion?
I just want to, Andrew, I believe we ended up deciding to leave the easement language as it is. Is that accurate? I think I've grown more comfortable with that.
Yeah, I think that's correct. And I think we have on the record a representation of the developer's attorney on behalf of the developer, what their intention is, which satisfies Lund's Food Holdings Group concern. And we'll deal with that downstream if it becomes an issue based on that representation, which I think is binding.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Member Staunton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a lot of different items that we're talking about tonight, but I think the big issue is, are we supportive of this or not? And we've got a lot of mechanics to work our way through, and we did have some discussion about this, but I think it's worth talking about again as we've had this continuing dialogue with interested people. And there's lots of folks that are interested in this, not surprisingly. And what I hope people realize that are here tonight, that have been here at several previous meetings that we've had, is we get, I mean, I think what everybody shares is how important this is to all of us. This is a real iconic part of our community, and it has been for at least 50 years, if not closing in on 80 years. As I mentioned at one of the previous meetings, one of the real eye-openers for me was reviewing the small area plan that was done of the 50th and France neighborhood back in 1974. And it had a number of components that were really interesting, part of which was that there were five gas stations in the 50th and France area. It looked very different than it looks today. The other thing that was interesting about the narrative in that was that it talked about meetings that have been happening regarding 50th and France since 1939, closing in on 80 years now, that revolved around three points. One was the commercial creep of the neighborhood into the surrounding residential areas. Two was traffic congestion, and three was parking. We're talking about those same three issues 80 years later, and we have been every single time there's been a change. The other revelation from that is that although 50th and France always feels, you know, people have talked, and persuasively so, about the charm of the area and the attraction of it, and I can tell you as somebody who works for a city, you know, further west, the envy of other cities about the success of 50th and France is palpable. But it hasn't been static. It's changed. It's changed repeatedly over those 50 to 80 years. And as you look back at the history, what you discover is that about every 15 to 20 years, it changes. And what's been unique about this area is it has changed in partnership with the city. So as Mr. Newendorf pointed out earlier, back in the late '60s, early '70s, we created a TIF district in order to build the south ramp and build the Ring Road. The old documentation actually hopes for a Ring Road that goes all the way into Minneapolis, but we never got that cooperation. And then about every 10, 15, 20 years after that, 1977, we build the middle ramp, 1991, we build the north ramp. 2007, we make significant changes to our comprehensive plan and our zoning code to facilitate the addition of the 5,000 France project. And so it has continued to be valuable because folks in the community, both businesses, residents, and council members who came before us, have managed this kind of delicate ecosystem that has 50th and France and done it in a really positive way. My experience with this and our experience with this really started as we tried to wrestle with what to do with the Edina Realty site and the Hooton site. Those were two sites that we had acquired in anticipation of needing to add to the parking on the north side, concluded that we didn't need to do that. And we put out a request for proposals, and we got four proposals, back three of which we ended up interviewing. And it was interesting, two of the proposals were really modest infill development. One talked about just a building on the Edina Realty site, and the other talked about something on the Hooton site along with the park on the Edina Realty site. And then there were two projects, this was one of them, and another one that were more ambitious. And the second project that was more ambitious talked about redeveloping the entire north side of what is now Market Street. And it had the same financial challenges because of the parking and the infrastructure had to go up to five or six stories, which of course was going to loom over the properties in the north residential area. And the real breakthrough for me, and I think for all of us, about what this set of, this development team brought to the table was a creativity that said, "Look, we can look at this differently. What if we move that height and that intensity to the middle of the property so that that height isn't looming over the edges, so that you're providing a transition to the surrounding residential area?" And then moreover, what if we take that ground level and really continue that experience that you now have in the 50th Street corridor? One of the things that I think is really unique about 50th and France is these alleyways, you know, the one that's right between Salou and Edina Grill, or the one that's by Edina 5O, or the one that goes behind Bojo's. But they run headlong into a parking ramp. We had an urban design symposium year last fall, and the fellow who came out, we did some tours with him. One of the tourists was 50th and France, and he loved it, but he was mystified as to why when you cut through going north off of 50th, you ran headlong into a parking ramp. Why did we have a parking ramp right in that prime area? And what the creativity of this group has done is realized that we can extend that feel north and create it onto Market Street and not going around the block but going through the block. So I get that this is a really delicate balance, and we want to get everything right. And I think the discussions, the folks from Lund's who made the suggestion about making sure we have the ability to go from Market Street into access of underground parking on the north side of 50th Street if we need to, it's a great suggestion. It really looks to the future, and it's something that we ought to be thinking through. And there's a lot, there's a ton of other details like that. In the past, we've talked about in the zoning part, the landscaping we need to do on the north side of the parking ramp to make sure the folks in that neighborhood are buffered appropriately from what's happening in the commercial area, the lighting on the top, all of the parking, all of the transition, I'm sorry, the traffic issues that we're going to have to just manage really carefully. I get the anxiety that folks who live in that area have. But I think I'm balanced. This is the right balance. This is our turn to manage the ecosystem in this area. And I'm comfortable going forward. I actually think the tax increment financing, we can talk a little bit about that when we approve the TIF note and the like. But I think as Councilmember Stewart said earlier, this gives us the opportunity to see what the return is. We're not relying on the developer's word on what the return is. We're actually reviewing the return. I'm sure Mr. Anhut will be up here later explaining that to us. But if anything, this is on the thin end on the return, and we want it to be successful. But I think this is a great partnership. I've gone on too long, but I just have felt like, I've heard so many comments, I've gotten emails, all of the people who've sent me emails, I appreciate your input. I wish I had my thoughts as aligned as I do now to tell you all how I was feeling about it. But I thought it was important to just share that big picture about how I'm looking at it and why I think this is really the right thing to, for us to take the next step to make this a continuing, sustainable asset in our community.
Thank you. Very well said. Member Brindle?
Thank you. There are a variety of things that I think, I hope we all align in as we've talked about this for many months. Looking back at the four responses that we got from the RFP, one of the parts of the RFP was an instruction to not limit the thoughts, not limit your ideas, to be creative. And we asked about, you know, the Edina Realty site, we asked about the Hooton site, and what do you see? What do you see for the future of 49th and a Half? And we saw some, we saw four very different proposals, and this was by far the most creative, out-of-the-box idea. It is going to be painful in a lot of ways. It's going to be painful for different people in different ways. So I guess in addition to whatever anybody else is going to say up here, just talking to some of the shop owners, talking to some of the customers in the area, it is the foot traffic that the shop owners, the business owners are most concerned about. And that is why you see empty storefronts. If there was plenty of foot traffic, you wouldn't, you'd have full storefronts. You'd have them in Wayzata. You'd have them here. But what we have is an area that needs a new shine, and by getting more residential in this area, I think it's kind of a natural result that you will increase foot traffic. Now, getting there, we have current business owners, we have professional services like chiropractor and dentist, and we have to make sure that people can get to the shops that are going to endure this. And I'm actually sorry, some of the business owners just walked out because it really is, their concern is really my first concern, in making sure that whatever drop-off point is designated, that it's accessible for a stroller, for a wheelchair, for a walker, whatever it might be. So looking at where those drop-off points are, making them not only convenient for getting the project done, but also prioritizing that customer to the area to make sure that they can get in as easily as possible. But really, I can't say enough about how well this team listens, about how accessible they have made themselves to the neighborhood. It is, I applaud you if you can do this in two years. I think that's amazing. And so we'll be looking. We'll be looking at what we can do to support you in order to get it done in two years.
Thank you. Member Fisher, then Member Stewart?
All right, I just have a few comments. The first thing I would say is what's very different about what we've been deliberating and dealing with on this is that, you know, for the vast majority of our, of the deliberations we have here on development projects, we're in the role of a regulator, in a sense, a land-use regulator. And this- In this project, we're partner, and we're a partner that actually initiated this project because we had very specific goals at 50th and France. And Mr. Nuenendorf really described pretty well what our goals were. And, you know, I think that's just an important thing to remind people of as we look at everything from TIF to, you know, to this development deal. It's our property, and it's how we, what we do with this property and how we're doing it with this project that gets to those end goals. And I would just want to comment, unfortunately, I think Mrs. Haugland left, but she commented in the public hearing that we're not listening, and I guess I just disagree. The one thing I can say on behalf of our side of the partnership, and what I've seen from the developer side of the partnership, is absolute listening. Now, that doesn't mean we can do everything people are asking, right? But we have listened to a great degree, I think. And the ironic thing about it for me is when I was on the planning commission years ago, when Mr. Haugland's project came to us, I actually remember people accusing us of the same thing. "You're not listening, you're drastically changing our comp plan and our zoning." All of the things that are being, a lot of the things that are being said were said about that project at 5,000 France, and I can't, I don't know if I could find anybody today that would say, "We don't like that project," or "That wasn't good for the 50th and France area." The fact that we went to mixed use, the fact that we built that kind of a project in this area, we're better for it. And I would say that in my experience, Edina has never been a follower, we've been a leader. And my experience and the people I talk to on sort of the national retail front, and I don't think you have to be an expert in retail to know this, right? Just read the news, listen to the news about what Amazon's doing, what's going on. The world is changing drastically, and if we sit here and treat this beautiful little area and pretend that it's going to be okay just doing what we're doing today, I think we're going to be on the wrong side of that bet. So I really believe that enhancing the mixed use, enhancing the livability in people living in this area, and creating an experience when you're walking to these parking ramps, a real experience is going to be better for this area, and I believe that's what we're doing here. And are we going to get everything perfectly right? I hope we get most of it right, but I know that we're listening, and we're going to continue to modify this, whether it's how we manage the parking, all of that. It's how we manage this during construction. I think as partners in this, there's a commitment to make sure we do the best job we can to make it work for everyone.
Thank you. Member Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to avoid repeating too much of what my colleagues have said. I agree with the substance of it. One thing I will quibble with, yes, in our RFP, we had four proposals. We were not obligated to accept any one of them. We could have easily have said no thank you to all four. So here, this project does a couple of things. First, I don't like the city owning idle property for a long, long time that just remains idle. So those pieces of property at where the Hooton Cleaners was and where Edina Realty was, those things kind of nag at me as something that just, it's a resource, it's an asset that ought to be used by somebody for something, and I just don't like those things sitting idle for too long. So I'm glad that we are going to put that to use. In fact, to me, that the old 49 and a Half Street felt a lot like Death Valley. It was, or has been described as an alley. Yeah, someplace one could pass through, but certainly not a place one would linger if you could help it. And so I'm glad that we are, and right adjacent to the crown jewel of the whole city at 50th and France. So I'm glad that we can put that to use and put it to use in a way that I believe is going to benefit the whole area right there, and will ultimately benefit all the retail stores who are in the area. I do think that the time of construction will be a stress on those retail stores, so I hope we are all aware of that, and we all do our best to continue to patronize those stores during that construction time, because it will cause some additional stress. So we had to decide a couple of things. Do we want to approve some of the variances that are needed, going to six stories, that kind of thing? And do we want to be a partner in this program? But also, are we going to commit some capital, as $10 million that Mr. Nuenendorf described through the TIF and other commitments from the city? And for me, that has been the harder question. So there has been no foregone conclusion here with respect to what we were going to do, when we were going to do it, or why, despite some suggestions by people that we maybe had this pre-planned somehow. But for me, I believe that this project will enhance our community, will enhance the 50th and France area. I had a bigger struggle getting my arms around the capital commitment from the city, and I have become convinced that it is appropriate, given the scope of what is going to be done here and given the enhancement to the community as a whole. So I'm going to support this.
Thank you. Member Stewart. I think my colleagues have been extraordinarily eloquent in the reasons expressed for supporting this project and the effort we've gone through from both a procedural and a substantive standpoint to get to this point in time. You know, I think one of the challenges for Edina is that we call ourselves a suburb, but we really are a very, very different city than an Eden Prairie, than a Chan-Hassan, than a Chaska, which we were probably more like 50 or 60 years ago. But now we're, you have to sort of bifurcate that word, suburban, and really what we are is sub-urban. We are a hybrid between a suburb and an urban area. And so in having a conversation on this issue, I just came back from the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and I had a conversation one day with a land use professional, and they said that, after listening to me talk about what was going on at 50th and France, what our challenges were there, what our challenges were in the Southdale District, they said, "Have you heard that expression before? Density is your destiny." And I said, "No, I never heard that expression before." But he said, well, this, she said, actually, "This is what you need to be thinking about is, where is density and height appropriate?" And of course, that's the way we've been describing it, but not as density being our destiny. And it's our destiny in the sense that if we want to embrace change and manage change, then these are things that we're going to have to learn how to deal with, or figure out how to deal with, or both height and density in the appropriate parts of our town where we can do things that are constructive to a neighborhood or a commercial area and not destructive. And this is an area where I think we have, we're heading down the right pathway here. I thought Member Staunton was very eloquent in giving both the historical reasons as to how we got where we are, but also talking about this fragile ecosystem of 50th and France. And I think after a lot of good, solid work on the part of this council and the developer themselves, and a lot of public input, I think they've had over 140 meetings where they've sought out the opinions of the public. We're trying to make a decision up here as both the HRA and the council that's best for our community. And I think all of us feel comfortable that we are making a decision that will be best for our community for the next probably 20 to 50 years, because this is the most consequential thing that's happened at 50th and France since those ramps were built back in the late '70s. That we're now having the ability to participate with the developer in creating vitality for the north half of an entire district that is admired by everyone. And we're going to do nothing, I think, but enhance the reputation of 50th and France with the project that they have brought forth. So I support it as well. Do we have a, we have a, we have a motion and a second? We've had discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? We have another resolution in front of us this evening, authorizing the sale of land to Market Street LLC. The present, or the immediately preceding presentation should have been sufficient. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Nuenendorf or the city's team? All right. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2017-06, authorizing the sale of land to Market Street LLC?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. One more matter for the HRA. Motion to approving design services contract for the North Ramp parking expansion. Anything you want to add there, Mr. Nuenendorf?
No, just to mention that I worked on this with our Public Works Department, who would normally be standing here this evening. I told them I would take care of this presentation for them. The design contract in front of you is with Mohagan Hansen Architecture. They successfully did work for the HRA back in 2012, 2013, that timeframe. They are also the architect on the developer's side of the project. Mr. Todd Mohagan, principal, is with us tonight. If you have any questions, he's in the audience if you'd like to hear anything from him. But other than that, it's a pretty standard architectural contract. We're looking to get started. We've got a kickoff meeting scheduled for about a week from now.
Okay. Questions from HRA members of the architect? Anyone? All right. Otherwise, entertain a motion.
So moved.
To approve the design services contract for the North Ramp. We got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. Any other meeting for the HRA members? Meeting of the HRA is adjourned. Calling to order the meeting of the Edina City Council Tuesday, June 27, 2017. It is 9:01 PM. Roll call, please.
Member Brindle.
Here.
Member Fisher.
Here.
Member Staunton.
Here.
Member Stewart.
Here.
I have one.
Here. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Does anyone wish to modify the agenda? If not, entertain a motion to adopt the meeting agenda as shown.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to approve the meeting agenda as shown. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. Reports and recommendations. Any further presentation there, Mr. Nuenendorf?
Just one real quick comment on this one. The presentation is the same, the redevelopment agreement is the same, the terms are the same. The reason that the HRA and the city are parties to it is because while the HRA provides the funding, the city is the beneficiary. So the easements that would be, that would allow the public use of these spaces are actually held by the city rather than the HRA. So that's why this issue is on the city council agenda today.
All right. And it's on the city council agenda as a corollary to what we just did with the HRA, but we do not have to have a public hearing at the city council level. Is that correct?
That's correct. The public hearing was strictly for the sale of land, and that was owned by the HRA.
All right. All right. Is there a motion to authorize the mayor and the city manager to execute a redevelopment agreement substantially similar to that provided to the council this evening?
So moved.
There's a second? We've got a motion and a second. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. Any further business for the council? Manager Neal?
No, there is none.
Council members, anything further? All right.
So you let the parade?
Stand adjourned.
Thank you.[1772.42]